Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Edina School Board for October 21st, 2013. We do have a quorum this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. There's special meeting and closed meeting on September 23rd, a regular enclosed meeting on September 23rd, and a special meeting on October 7th. Okay, a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved?
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any additions or corrections to those minutes as written? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes for those meetings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dr. Dressen, could you please walk us through tonight's agenda?
I will. First of all, I'll highlight the October 7th meeting. It was a work session the board did have. A lot of the items that we're addressing today were discussed in length at this work session, including the all-day, everyday kindergarten proposal that the board was -- received input from the administration on and is now framed for a recommendation as far as discussion tonight. We also received an update on our two studies, the birth through grade five study, as well as the secondary academic study. The board also discussed a little bit around the equity leadership plans, some of the partnership policy work that we're doing, again relates back to the strategic plan, then finally the teacher evaluation policy and -- or plan. At this point, the school board did provide input, as well as the administration, to our Director of Teaching and Learning, Randy Smazl, who took that information back, and the board will learn more about that tonight. And then finally, there was one action item as it relates to professional learning. The board did approve the professional learning plan for 2012, 13. As far as our agenda item for tonight, we do have a presentation by our friend from Normandale Elementary French Immersion. We have a variety of reports, including our financial audit, update on enrollment projections, class size, facility information. I'll also give an overview of some of the leadership actions occurring within the district. We have a relatively short consent agenda item. Our action items, again, then we'll be approving the audit, improving the health insurance renewal for the upcoming year, our teacher evaluation model. Randy Smazl will give us an update on that as that moves forward for action, as well as some policies that we'll be taking action on. And then we have a variety of discussion items as it relates to the all-day kindergarten proposal, as well as more policies. We're heavy into the board policy review process. And then that will close out our meeting for tonight.
Thank you. And just a point of clarification, the item that's been walked in, is that a correction or a standalone action item?
That'll be a correction.
So we want to do that as item E? Or can we add that to item C?
That would be...
Should replace C.
It should replace C.
Okay.
It will be a replacement of C. We do have a walk-in item that replaces C. It clarifies more the recommendation that the administration presented to the board earlier in the month -- earlier in the week.
Great. Okay, a motion to amend?
So, second.
So moved to amend to replace item C with a revised version that was carried into the meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any members of the audience who'd like to speak this evening? Thanks, Sarah. Seeing none, now we're on to our presentation.
I'd like to welcome Jerry Lekoska and Maddie Buck, who's going to talk more about the Normandale experience that we have going on. Where are they now?
So...
And we know Maddie's not in elementary school anymore.
Let me bring up our technology. First of all, thank you very much, members of the school board. Oh, I need to use the microphone.
And it's on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll start out with, "Thank you very much, school board members, Superintendent Dressen, directors, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. I am very lucky this evening to bring the next chapter. We are, I think, the benefactors of having a school mission that serves us well. We are working in partnership with the families and the community to educate young people to become lifelong learners in a rapidly changing, culturally diverse global society." Forgive me for changing all of that, but in -- all of these words are important, all for all, and I thought it would be important for us this evening to demonstrate how we are able with fidelity to use this mission to our advantage. I brought with me tonight a former kindergartner who has -- is also a graduate of Edina High School, Maddie Buck. Maddie's going to speak to you later. But let me give you a few other pictures of what it looks like to have the skills, the self-confidence, and the capacity to work in mul-- we have to get the mouse here to So, there it comes. The gentleman in the hat...
Bonjour. Je m'appelle Martin. Je suis un diplômé de Normandale. Ma famille habite à Edina et j'ai continué mes études françaises à l'université où j'ai eu l'occasion d'étudier à l'étranger et de voyager. J'ai habité à Paris pendant une année en 2010. J'ai suivi des cours à l'institut catholique de Paris. Tous mes cours étaient en français. Parmi les cours, il y avait l'alimentation et la synthèse, la littérature, communication professionnelle, économie générale. C'était très bien passé.
So, for those of you who don't speak French, this is Martin Roach. He's wearing a hat. He's in Portugal. He graduated from St. Edina, then St. Thomas. Because he spoke French so well, a company had to start translating. When they found out he could translate so well -- excuse me, I need to go back -- they encouraged him to apply for a graduate scholarship. He ended up being able to study in Madrid. He's now in Paris. And you probably heard the words littérature, literature. Economie, he's studying economy. He's getting his degree, also, his graduate degree, in French, studying in France, in Paris. That's where Martin is right now. He gave me a little translation of that. He's -- if I can get my mouse to work again, excuse me. Oops. Clearly, I need to go back, too. This is really touchy, isn't it? There it is. Is it going to work for us? No? Well, I'm going to skip that. What Martin tells you is that he says, "Excuse me, I wrote this all in French. I'm going to try to translate it back into English." He's made good use of this. Now we're going to move -- now we're going to move on to my guest right here, Maddie Buck. Maddie graduated from Edina High School in 2007, and she went on to St. Olaf College. After she graduated from St. Olaf, she understood that there was a huge opportunity, if you spoke and had an interest in languages, to apply for a Fulbright scholarship. That's what Maddie did. I'm going to let her tell a little bit about her experience in Norway, because I believe you now speak Norwegian, too.
So, the year after I graduated from college, I went to Norway on a Fulbright scholarship. I lived in Oslo and worked at a research institute researching sustainability in the textile industry, which effectively meant a lot of work having to do with wool. Norwegians like wool. So, yeah, it was a great opportunity, and I made myself speak Norwegian with everyone, and now I can speak Norwegian as well.
Okay, prata norska. Okay. So, that's flexibility. That's flexibility for you. Now Maddie also did some clerking for a judge, was trying to figure out what would be the best match for her in the future, was considering law school. While she was contemplating her options, she happened to run across an old principal who decided that while you're contemplating your options, what would you think about using your French again? Invited Maddie to come back to Normandale, and Maddie had a great time working this summer with some of -- pardon me, this is really touchy. And now, we have the pleasure of having Mademoiselle Maddie Buck as a kindergarten parent at Normandale. Bonjour, Monsieur Dinosaur! Ça va aujourd'hui? Oui. Ça va bien? Okay. Je vais lire d'abord. Je lis et vous écoutez. Merci? Okay. Aujourd'hui, nous sommes mercredi 16 octobre 2013. Okay, alors maintenant ensemble. Maddie's parents evidently made the decision to put her in kindergarten, but Maddie's lived immersion fully herself from kindergarten all the way through Normandale, then onward, and then she also applied it in a second language. We are the benefac-- she's now made a full trip. She's now back instructing kindergartners about 24 years later and applying that experience. Does anybody have any questions? We have here somebody who is more than willing to share what she has learned or what her experiences have been going through an elementary program, a middle school program, and high school. So I give you Ms. Maddie Buck, if anybody in the school board or in the audience would like to ask questions.
Maddie, did you find it easier to learn Norwegian when you were in Norway because of your background with two languages?
Yeah, so actually, backtrack that a little bit. In high school, I was an exchange student in Italy, and I was able to learn Italian super fast because it was so similar to French. So that -- and part of -- so yes, learning another language does help you learn another and other language. But also, the interest for learning Norwegian or learning Italian came from having grown up speaking another language.
Maddie, is there anything that you could share for families in our Edina audience who might be considering a kindergarten choice for their young child? What things should they be aware of when thinking about our French immersion program?
Do you mean like, are you looking at the negative side of things, or what exactly do you mean?
I can't -- well, if they're worried, then yes.
No, it just, what are the advantages? What are the things, now that you've gone through it, your parents made this choice for you. And so there are other parents who, you know, if they're asking their four-year-old, four-and-a-half-year-old, you know, where do you want to study? Well, they won't necessarily know. So what can you tell them? Here are the things that are wonderful about this opportunity.
Well, I think it's a -- if you have the opportunity to learn a second language from the get-go, it's a great opportunity. There are a lot of people out there who are afraid of foreign languages because it was hard, and it's likely hard because you start at an older age. That's my perception, at least. So that's one thing. You get to start off early, get ahead of the game a little bit. Also, you kind of -- you're also opened up to a more multicultural world, maybe, earlier than other people, because just every day in class, you have most likely a French helper in your classroom, and so that you kind of get an idea of, oh, there's people from other places, you know? So that's another thing. And then, also, it's just really fun. We sing a lot of songs, and I look very fondly upon the years I spent at Normandale.
Maddie, you went all the way through our program. Are there things that you would change about it? I mean, we're presently doing a K5s -- birth to five study, and we're in the middle of a secondary study. Looking at your French experience, are there things that you would change? Add, take away from the program?
Yes. The thing, first of all, I was like the third or fourth class, so I definitely know there were things that were still being worked on, especially when I was in middle school, and we were -- they were trying to figure out how to do the middle school thing. And I think, so I don't know exactly how that is now, and I'm sure that, using us as guinea pigs, that you've figured it out a little bit better. So I would say making sure that the French program, that it's extended through middle school and high school in the right way. And I guess I don't know what the right way is, but...
Okay. But that's a piece that we need to keep looking at.
Yeah, and I don't know what it is like now. I know what it was like in, what, 2001, so...
Do you think there were any trade-offs? Being an immersion student?
Yes, I think my schooling, I have gotten a lot of language, and that has turned into my thing. And because I started out with French, and then that led me to Italian, and then I decided to do that in college as well. I think, and I think it's partly because we were the first few classes, there were some things that were maybe not as strong, or, and maybe that was because it was taught in French. I'm just being really honest. So, like, my math is not very -- has not been as good as my language, and so that's something. And I think I would attribute that to kind of being a guinea pig throughout middle school, so. So you get one thing, but maybe not, you don't get everything. I don't know if I can, if that's okay for me to say.
It is. Great.
Totally okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just to finish up here, I want you to know, not everybody uses their French because they're interested in languages. Sometimes, it turns out that it just gets you that little, so sorry, that little edge. Here we have a young lady who also graduated in 2009. Her interest happened to be figure skating, which took her all over the world. But you can't necessarily make a living figure skating, but Noel Pearson found a way. This is so annoying, I apologize. You have a very touchy mouse here.
Hi, I'm Noel Pearson, and I work at New Balance Shoe Company in Boston, Massachusetts, as a French-English brand representative. I attended Normandale French Immersion, Valleyview Middle School, and Edina High School, and graduated in 2009. I continued my studies at Framingham State University here in Massachusetts and majored in economics, French, and minored in political science. I'd just like to say thank you to the teachers and staff at all three schools located in Edina that I attended for giving me the gift of language.
So where are they now? What I want to share with you is that I am absolutely confident that all of our Edina graduates are continuing to learn and apply their skills in very interesting ways, whether they're marketing shoes, they're going on Fulbright scholarships, or they're experiencing learning abroad 100% in a foreign language. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have our audit presentation.
And early, the district goes through a financial audit that typically gets concluded in August and September, and the report goes to the Finance and Facility Committee in October, and then formally gets to the board tonight. We welcome Bill and his team, who worked very diligently on this with Margot and her team, and we ask that the presentation go forward. Margot?
Good evening. Just as we have processes to assess our students' performance, we have an annual process to assess our financial performance. And it takes everybody throughout the year, whether an individual employee is managing $100, or you as the board managing $100 million, to do their part throughout the year. So, a special thank you to Bill and his staff, and Jim Gilligan and the business office staff for their work. It takes several months to get to the point to give this report to you, so I don't want to steal Bill's thunder, but I'm happy to report we have a good report, and I'll let him continue with the rest. How's that?
Thank you, Margot. Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board, directors. Thank you for making time on your agenda for me this evening, and I would concur with Margot's assessment. I think this is a very positive report. The first thing I would like to do is just discuss a little bit with you what our role is as auditor. You receive the district's financial statements, the financial statements for extracurricular student activity accounts, and our management report. The responsibility for the information and the data in those financial statements rests with the district's management. We are not part of your internal controls. We come in and provide the opinion that goes at the front of that document that states we did our audit procedures, and we're opining that that financial statement fairly presents the district's financial condition and results for the year-end audit. In addition, because you earn over half a million dollars in federal awards, you're subject to a separate single audit of those federal awards expenditures. As part of both the financial statement audit and the single audit, we test compliance and look at your internal controls. You're subject to a separate audit of compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. And then, as I mentioned before, you don't keep your student activity accounts under board control, so they're not presented in a general fund, they're presented in a separate report. So you receive that separate financial statement, which we audit those accounts separately, and also look at internal controls and compliance with those extracurricular student activity accounts. As far as the results of the audit, I thought the process went very well. The timing went as planned. There were no issues, no problems with the scope of the audit. As far as the basic financial statements, we were once again able to issue a clean opinion on the basic statements. We also issued a clean opinion on the schedule of federal awards expenditures, that they're fairly stated in relation to the basic financial statements. We had no internal control or compliance issues to report either on the financial statement level or the single audit level. Excuse me. The only issue that we had to report was in Minnesota legal compliance. One of 40 dispersments that we tested was not paid within 35 days of the receipt of goods or services, or the invoice for goods or services as required by state statutes. I think it was about four or five days late, but nonetheless, this is something. I think there were two of these we noted in last year's audit, one this year. It's something that the district needs to continue to work on. Part of your process, which we think is a good process for internal controls, when you receive those invoices, is setting them out to be approved by the people that order them. Sometimes that takes time to get that out to the buildings, back to the district office, but being mindful that that has to be done within 35 days is something you have to comply with, so. One other recommendation that we mentioned in our management report, you had a new account this year with US Bank where you're paying some vendors electronically. This is a case where the original statutes for paying claims for school districts are decades old, and some of the changes that they're making to allow electronic payments haven't quite caught up with some of this, the requirements. The requirement for paying a claim says that the district has to get a signed declaration from the person making the claim that's just and correct, that no part of it has been paid before. Typically, you'd get that by the endorsement of your check. You have that declaration on the back of the checks that you issue for claim payments. For the last several years, districts have been able to use electronic fund transfers, credit cards, things like that, to pay instead of those checks. And all of the statutes that allow you to use those electronic means of payment require you to comply with the existing statutes, including getting that written claim declaration signed. It's really not practical when you're paying electronically to require you to get that signed declaration, but that requirement is still out there until the legislature either changes the laws to kind of allow for a more streamlined process for the electronic payments, or you get some kind of opinion from the state auditor's office that allows you to do that. So with this new account that you opened this year, we just remind the district, you still have to comply with getting that compliance declaration if you can. I know Margot and Jim are working with US Bank to maybe get that approval as part of the process where the vendor is signing off accepting that payment, working with US Bank to get that built into the process. But just something to be mindful of going forward. As far as the student activity accounts, we gave a clean opinion on your cash receipts and dispersments there, with the caveat that we only audit the recorded receipts and dispersments. You don't have controls in place out at the buildings for all of these to assure that all receipts are being recorded. These are all the little fundraisers, things you have going on at the building level that aren't running through your district business office. And from a compliance standpoint, once again, we had no findings to report on the student activities. Moving on to some of the financial information for the year, this is a graph that shows a 10-year history of the statewide trend for unreserved fund balance as a percentage of your general fund operating expenditures. This is based on the state's calculation for statutory operating debt. It's a little different than the percentages we'll talk about when we get to your fund as a whole, but it's the only data. We have some kind of statewide benchmarking for you. For your district, at the end of the year, you had about 17.4% of your annual expenditures in your year-end unreserved fund balance. That's up about a percent from the year before. You can see for the last four years, you've had kind of a nice, slow growth trend there from about 15 and 1/2% to about 17 and 1/2% over the last four fiscal years. By comparison, at the end of 2012, the last year, we have statewide data. The average school district had about 23% of their expenditures in ending fund balance. This table shows your governmental fund revenues per ADM served compared to a statewide and metro area average. In your governmental funds for 2013, you took in just under $115 million in total revenue. That was up about $5 million, or 4 and 1/2% from the year before. Most of this growth came in the general fund. So you can see from the table, you took in about $13,640 per student served. That's a $521 increase. The general fund revenues increased $534. Some of the things that changed from 2012 to 2013, your property tax revenue was about $394 per student hire. That was mainly due to an increase in your levy through your capital technology referendum, which added about $3 million, and also there was some additional operating referendum levy for 2013. Your estate revenue sources were about $374 higher on a per-student basis. There were three areas of increase there. General education aid was up about $1.1 million. That was due to an increase in the students served, as well as a $50 increase in the basic per pupil funding for 2013. Special education revenue was up about half a million dollars from the year before, and you received a new aid this year, literary incentive aid. First time you received that, that was about $564,000. The one area where your revenue went down was federal revenues in the general fund, which were down about $200 per student, and that was primarily due to some funding that you received in 2012. That was a one-time education jobs fund stimulus funding. You used those dollars in 2012, and that's a non-recurring grant. And that was about $1.4 million, so those funds were not available for 2013. On the expenditure side, you spent just under $117 million in your governmental funds. That was about $9 million, or roughly 8 and 1/2% higher than the year before. On a per-student basis, that was about $1,022 higher than the year before. Most of that, again, came in the general fund. You were about $635 higher per student in the general fund spending. That came in mainly three areas. Regular instruction was up about $215 per student. That represented mainly increases in salaries and benefits for teachers and assistants. Sites and buildings was up about $326 per student, and capital was up about $147 per student in the general fund. There are two things here. First of all, that's where your capital technology levy spending increased, and also you had a capital lease of just under $600,000 for some additional technology purchases that were made in 2013. The other area where expenditures increased was in the debt service fund. You can see that debt service went up about $341 per student, and this is primarily because you had about $60 million sitting in a refunding bond escrow going into 2013, so there was some additional interest. Those crossover bonds were sitting in an escrow account, and the old debt was also outstanding until that escrow was used to retire them. So you had a little, kind of a one-year bump in your debt service interest payment related to those refunding bonds, which was financed partially by the proceeds of those bonds and also by interest that you earned in that escrow account. So you should see that trend go back down to a more typical level in 2014. And drilling down within those governmental funds, the general fund is your primary operating fund. You ended 2013 with a fund balance, unrestricted fund balance of about $13 million and a total increase of about $880,000 from the year before. Your total fund balance was about $14.1 million in the general fund. That was an increase of just under $1.6 million. Cash, at the end of the year, in the general fund was just over $10 million. That was an increase of almost $15 million from the year before, and probably the most remarkable thing about the graph here, the blue bars that represent your cash and investment balance. You can see in 2011 and 2012, the relationship between... You can see in 2011 and 2012, the relationship between your fund balance and your cash balance really changed. That was when the state was using increases in your tax shift and changes in the metering of state aid payments, meaning the amount of aids that you were due for the fiscal year that were paid in cash by June thirtieth as opposed to after June thirtieth in the next fiscal year. So they were essentially borrowing your cash flow to help balance the state budget for those periods. In 2013, they paid back part of that shift. The metering of state aids was back up to a little over eighty-six percent, being paid to you by the end of the year, close to the ninety percent where it should be. So as the state's financial condition improved, that's helped to improve your cash flow. Some of the numbers behind the fund balance on that graph here, as I mentioned, your total fund balance in the general fund was about fourteen point one million at the end of 2013, one point five seven million higher than the year before. That was about a million and a quarter better than projected in your budget. The unrestricted portion of fund balance represent about fourteen point one percent of your total expenditures in the general fund, and the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year represented about seven point eight percent of your total fund balances. Your main revenue in the general fund comes from general education aid. The factors that drive that is the formula and the number of students that you served. This graph shows the number of students, the change in the number of students that you've served over the last ten years in terms of average daily membership and pupil units. For 2013, you served about eight thousand three hundred and sixty-five average daily membership, and that was an increase of forty-seven from the year before. You've continued to have fairly consistent growth over the last decade. You have a fairly unique profile compared to a lot of districts. You're keeping about ninety-six and a half percent of your resident students being served in the district and bringing in over twelve hundred students through the open enrollment options in program, making up that eighty-three hundred and sixty-five number. So from a revenue standpoint, the general fund took in about ninety-three point seven million dollars in 2013. You were very close to budget, about twenty-five thousand dollars under. There were some variances from the different sources. Property taxes were about seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand under budget, mainly because you allocated about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars of your levy to your building construction fund. You had accumulated a deficit in previous years over spending your previous capital levy in that fund. You'd intended to allocate some tax revenues over a three-year period to eliminate that deficit, and you were able to actually do that in a single year. So that was essentially just a reallocation of those property taxes. State aids were about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars over budget, primarily in special education. And your other revenues, which is fees, contributions, interest revenue, that was about four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars over budget, and that's an area where you budget very conservatively because those are non-recurring, hard to estimate revenue sources. On the expenditure side, you spent about ninety-two point seven million in the general fund. That was about one point three million dollars under budget. The two big areas of variance there, supplies and materials, were five hundred and eighty-eight thousand less than budget. As a result, that you have an assignment for site carryovers of about six hundred and two thousand dollars, as some of your school sites didn't spend their entire allocation for supplies and materials. And capital was about five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars under budget, and it was due to this budget savings that you were able to eliminate that deficit that had accumulated in the building construction fund by reallocating that revenue. So the cost savings here allowed you to wipe that deficit out in a single year. Briefly, your other operating funds are shown here, five-year history of your fund balance for food service and community service special revenue funds. Food service fund had a fund balance of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars at the end of the year. That was about forty-seven thousand dollars higher than the year before. That fund balance represents about sixteen point two percent of your annual expenditures in that fund. Total revenues and expenditures in that food service fund are about three point three million dollars, both revenues and expenditures. The community service fund ended the year with a fund balance of just under one point two million dollars. That was down ninety-one thousand dollars, but about fifty thousand less than you had budgeted to spend that fund down. That fund balance represents about fifteen and a half percent of your annual expenditures in the community service fund. In that fund, you spent about seven and a half million dollars and take in about seven point four million dollars annually. The budget savings was primarily on the expenditure side. Your expenditures were about forty-six thousand dollars under budget in that fund. And again, here, what we advise our clients is that these funds should be self-sustaining, so you're not having to make transfers from the general fund to support these operations. Very nice trends as far as the last five years, you've been able to keep a nice steady fund balance in both of these funds, you're looking at fifteen, sixteen percent of expenditures in both of these funds, very similar to what you were able to do in the general fund. So a nice steady trend, which is what we like to see. And finally, the last financial statement in your report, at the front of that, we take all of that fund information that's converted to entity-wide financial statements that bring in all of the capital assets and debt and other long-term assets and liabilities that aren't reported within the fund, so it gives you a little bit longer-term picture of the district's financial condition and the change. At the end of 2013, you had about forty point two million dollars in total net position district-wide. It was an increase of about five point seven million dollars from the year before. The two areas of increase were in your net investment in capital assets, and that went up about two and a half million dollars, and the reason, that's typically related to the relationship between how quickly you're paying back your debt that you issued to build capital assets and how quickly you're depreciating those capital assets. But now that you're spending dollars from that tech levy or you're adding capital assets without having to add debt, you're going to see that rise over the next few years as you spend that levy. The unrestricted piece of net position also went up about just under three million dollars from the year before, and that was primarily related to the increase in your general fund fund balance. So that was everything I had intended to cover. Are there questions, things you wanted me to get into further?
This report was covered at the committee level as well, so several committee members had time to process that.
Just what I was going to say.
Thank you.
The board will take action on this later tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we have our enrollment projections presentation.
Annually, we provide the board with a long-range update of our enrollment, as well as our facilities and class size. Mary Manterfield and Margot have been working on this and would ask them to provide an overview if they could, please.
Good evening. As Dr. Dressen mentioned, this is our annual report. The first slide shows a change in enrollment from fall of 2012 to fall of 2013, although we have fall of twenty-one, two, three. As you see at the elementary level, we showed an increase of thirty students from 2012 to 2013. Middle school was an increase of thirty-two students, and high school was a decrease of three, for a net gain of fifty-nine students from 2012 to 2013. At various buildings, Concord went down one student, Cornelia saw a loss of twenty-three students, Countryside went up twenty-one, Highlands increased by six, Creek Valley increased by eleven, Normandale by sixteen. At the middle school, Valley View saw an increase of the thirty-two students, South View was flat from thirteen oh five to thirteen oh five. When we look at the fall 2013 annual enrollment versus projected enrollment, the first piece you will notice is on resident data. At the elementary level, we saw quite an increase in projected resident growth and a decrease in non-resident growth. All elementary grades were above in resident projection except grade four. Our largest increase was in grade five with twenty students over projection. If you look at middle school, there the growth was in non-resident. We had a slight decrease in resident from projection to actual, a slight increase in non-resident, and a net difference of one. The largest increase in grade, in middle school in grade eight was with, the largest increase in grade, middle school in grade eight was six over projection, and that was all resident growth. High school was down in resident projections in all three grades, and as you can see, they were down in resident data and also up in non-resident data. So the difference was twenty-eight. Non-resident students who attend Edina schools. Non-resident students are students who live in the city of Edina but whose homes are actually in a surrounding school district, students attending our schools through the Choice is Yours program and the open enrollment program. The twelve hundred and thirty-nine represent fourteen point seven seven percent of our district enrollment. In 2012-13, open enrollment represented fourteen point eight three percent of our district enrollment. We had approximately three hundred and ninety students who applied for open enrollment and met the January fifteenth deadline. We were able to accommodate elementary waiting lists, with the exception of fourth grade. Middle school, we continue to have waiting lists at all four grades. When you look at the five-year enrollment projection, you can see that the slides indicate we will have relatively flat growth from 2013 through the 2018-19 school year. The growth that we experienced should be in resident growth with some slight decrease in non-resident growth.
Can I just ask a quick question on that slide? Does that mean in the end we're predicting about two hundred more students across the next five years? So if we're at eighty-four hundred, we'd be at eighty-six hundred?
Yes, that's enrollment, not every daily membership, which we'll talk about. But overall, somewhere between flat to just under one percent growth on an annual basis over the next five years. We do have some latitude with the open enrollment, some where we, you know, if all of a sudden resident enrollment's going down, then Mary works at getting, looking at the waiting list, seeing are there students interested in coming into Edina schools? So from a projection standpoint, that certainly can change depending on what's going on in our resident enrollment, but yes, that's what that would say. Two hundred, in this case, increase, student increase in the next five years.
When we look at elementary projection by building, and this can be pretty difficult to project out, we don't know from year to year how many families from what attendance area would necessarily be applying to a choice program or being accepted into a choice program. But if you look at just the pattern between thirteen, fourteen, and fourteen, fifteen, you will see minimal change, essentially two students. Through the course of the five years, we see some buildings, Countryside in particular, Highlands in particular, are projected to have a fairly significant increase in enrollment over the next five years. We can, as I said, we can have some control over, we could have some control over these numbers based on open enrollment.
So why was there a projected drop at Normandale? Was that a planned drop?
Okay, so Normandale, because it's an immersion school. If we were truly to take a pure projection method on all the elementary schools, we'd just let the model calculate forward and project what that would be. But in the case of Normandale, because once fourth and fifth grade comes or even third grade, we can't necessarily have students migrate in because it's French immersion, I have to manipulate that calculation, and so what I've done is taken a five-year history there. So six fifty-four is a higher enrollment, I took an average, and then we make that work for Normandale and then calculate the others. So it could be a little higher, we have some years it's been lower than six fifty-four seven.
I think what's happened at Normandale this, in the past couple of years that had not happened previously, is that we are filling spots in third, fourth, and fifth grade with French-speaking open enrollment students. In the past, when students would migrate out into our elementary schools, they're not going to come from Edina, so they weren't, the spots weren't being filled, and now we've been able to fill those spots with open enrolled students that speak the French language.
Could I ask one more question regarding Normandale? Approximately how many students remain on the waiting list, I guess just take this year, who we were not able to offer a slot?
So in kindergarten, we probably still have thirty-plus residents who hit the January fifteenth deadline, who have, were not able to have a spot in Normandale. We had very little movement this year at Normandale. From January fifteenth and students who were placed up until at this point, very, very few families chose after they took the acceptance not to, not to follow through and come through to Normandale. And then finally, the secondary projection enrollment by building. You can see if you just again look at the next two years, South View is going to show an increase, Valley View is projected to show a slight decrease. What these numbers don't show is that next year, for fourteen, fifteen, sixth grade is projected at six hundred and eighty-six students, seventh grade is projected at six hundred and seventy-four, eighth grade is projected at six hundred and seventy-nine, and ninth grade right now would be projected at six hundred and ninety students. Tenth grade is at six seventy-eight, eleventh at six fifty, and twelve, twelfth grade at six eighty-two. You can see over the next five years, we were anticipating a, again, about a two percent, two point five percent growth.
So we've been, we've been discussing enrollment, which is the body count in the building, the number of students on any given day, which is important, it helps, it's how the district generates its revenue, and also we need to have a conversation about capacity and how many students we have within the district. But in order to truly get to how the school is funded, we have to convert enrollment into what's called average daily membership, which means we might have a student enroll in January. We are not funded for the full year at a one point oh for that student. In that example, we'd be about a point five, and we have migration of students in and out in various educational programming for students. And so, it's a very complex process with the state to convert to average daily membership, but now that's what we're going to talk about in terms of average daily membership versus enrollment, so it's how we're funded. And even in the projection, so for example, in a previous slide, we saw two hundred student growth in enrollment over five years, that would be slightly different on average daily membership, and typically slightly lower. Here is just a report that shows what we were planning in the preliminary budget in terms of projections for average daily membership, again, how we're funded, and what we, as of October first, when we take that enrollment count and then project it into average daily membership, what that is, and we are within two student, two average daily membership students of projections from our original projections. But this does not include the fifteen that we planned in the budget adjustment process where we were going to try to generate some more. So very, very close to our original projections, then the remainder, far right of that schedule, then calculates that out into what's called pupil units, the state then weights different grade levels of students, different, or average daily membership differently in terms of how we're funded, so that nets out to about nine. And again, we'll use that information, continue to monitor on a monthly basis with Finance and Facilities Committee to see how close we are on a monthly basis to that average daily membership projection. The projection model we use actually has about seventeen methods of how we could, what, how we use the history in order to project forward. We narrow that down to five, and you can see there isn't a significant amount of variance among those. If you take the highest and lowest in this seventeen, they're... If you take the highest and lowest in this 17, there typically is a little bit more difference. This year, we're using the late ratio of the prior three years and moving forward with that. We'll continue to monitor that also, we're conducting a demographic study at this time too, and use that information and monitor our own internal projection system. We also use, I'm back on enrollment now, I have to clarify which one I'm talking about in terms of using enrollment and the capacity of the buildings. And so these slides show Southview, Valley View, and the high school, and how many instructional spaces we have, capacity at 85 percent of what's called district functional capacity, which would be, in the case of the middle school, seven out of eight class periods, and the case of the high school, five out of six class periods, and the maximum capacity would be 100 percent, which is really hard to, from a scheduling standpoint, to get there. So what you can see on each of these slides then is, as we do a five-year projection, and again, this is enrollment, where are we in that range of capacities? So for example, under Southview, even five years out, we still, we're getting close to being at capacity, but we aren't over capacity yet, which I think is important to note. And as we continue to look at the other schools. Lenny, did you have a question?
Yeah, there are new buildings that are going to be, that are being built at Southdale. Do these projections take into consideration families moving into there and opening up houses, or is that what's going to get covered in the demographic?
That will be covered in the demographic study and we will need to update this accordingly after that demographic study. That's part of the focus of that study is not only to look at the district history and enrollment, but what's going on within the city in terms of development. And what we have asked the demographer to do is also look by building, or by school also, the enrollment and the projections because it, we don't know what that looks like. I mean, it's one thing to look at it district-wide, it's another to say where's that development going to occur and how is that going to affect the elementaries and the middle schools.
And when does the first building come online over in Southdale? Because there's a couple.
Do we know when that is?
I believe it's, it's early '15 as I recall.
Okay.
So in preparing this report, I was thinking, well, it's somewhat premature, not premature, but we know there's a key piece of information out there because of this development that's coming that isn't included in this report. I still think the information is useful, it's a good lead-in to, and also a lead-in to the results of the demographic study, which currently is being worked on right now. We'll have to you by Janu, no later than January, I'm hopeful even in December that we may have the results. And we have Valley View and the high school, and again, no areas under this current model with their enrollment projection showing any areas of being over capacity. And again, we will update it accordingly. So in summary.
The elementary school enrollment is projected to increase by 83 students or 2.2 percent during the next five-year period. The projection suggests that Concord and Normandale Elementary Schools will be in somewhat declining enrollment with the other four elementary schools experiencing growth. The secondary enrollment is projected to increase by 117 students or 2.5 percent during the next five years. This projection increase might impact open enrollment space.
And as we saw on a previous slide, the K-12 total growth in enrollment is about 200 students over a five-year period, and we're, we continue to recognize that the projection model is impacted not only by development within the city or in our surrounding communities, but also it is affected by the programming studies that are going on right now and how does that impact long-term enrollment changes. So we'll continue to look at internally and externally what's going on and how it impacts enrollment and be flexible with our projections and look forward to the results of the demographic study coming up in the, in the next couple of months. Do you have any questions for us?
Is it misleading if we have 30 on the waiting list at Normandale and we've just picked a number which is the average of the last three years to indicate that we expect declining enrollment?
Certainly can make that adjustment.
If I was a parent, it would appear to me that, oh great, I can get into Normandale easier next year, and that, I guess, may not be the case if we have 30 on the waiting list. Just a thought.
Or is it a capacity issue? The, I'm wondering, are we over capacity right now? And that's why I'm just trying to understand some background in the numbers.
So we accept 112 students into kindergarten at Normandale. That ends up being an average class size of 27. And so we don't have room for, this year we have 113 because of a special board clause with a staff member there, but we would not have enough room at Normandale to accommodate any more than 112 students. As it goes through the system, we go from five kindergarten classrooms to four in grades one through five. And so I, you know, the reality is there isn't room at Normandale right now. People can surely apply in kindergarten, and we look forward to our families doing that with our upcoming kindergarten registration, but as far as there being excess space there, that's really not the case in the, in the lowest grades possible.
And the number decrease sounds like it's based on when, if older kids leave, trying to figure out how to fill those places back in because you can't join in third grade if you've never had, been in a French immersion program.
We do not, up until December, December of first grade, a student could begin at Normandale without having any French experience. After January of first grade, they have to be able to pass a proficiency test in French in order to enter. So if we have attrition, which we do every year with Edina residents for a variety of reasons who choose to go back to their neighborhood school, we are not going to fill those spots with other Edina residents, they just don't have the French proficiency. So any filling of spots in the upper grades tend to be open enrolled families or families that are moving into the district, which does happen in the upper grades also.
But technically, that's why on the projection, in the model, I can't allow it just to look at the history and move it forward and I have to come up with some method to show a projection. Excuse me.
Margot, I thought you had said that this year's Normandale class was 16 higher than last year, so the adjustment of down 17 is really just accounting for uplift this one year?
Yeah, if I, I have to look back at the history, it is higher this year than it typically has been.
So that when it says 654 down to 637, some of that is just because this may be an abnormally high year?
And that's certainly information I can provide you back to the five-year history overall.
So once we get the demographer's results, are we going to rerun the enrollment projections going out for the five years?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I can, go ahead.
I was just going to say, because when I was looking, because we got in our packets more backup material than you presented tonight on your slides when you're giving your report, and on some of those, it looks like, for example, in our, in our kindergarten and first grade, the numbers are absolutely flat all five years in kindergarten and first grade, but we show variation in all the other grades. It seemed like, it might be just a statistical anomaly, but if we're going to rerun everything once we get new information, it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to necessarily dig into that at this point.
So on the kindergarten, and that's a good point, that is flat right now, there's a couple of ways to calculate that, and I have the data for the county births, et cetera, et cetera. But what that is showing, if I use, like one of, there's one of five models I can use to pull that, it shows it declining over the five years, and some of them are pretty drastic based on births and zip codes and a variety of things, which we are not seeing that happen. And so I felt.
So you just, you just flattened it out rather than taking.
That is one.
Okay, gotcha.
Right.
All right.
And then, then use, because certainly the demographer will dive a little deeper into that and give us some, they'll give, the demographers usually give you low, medium, kind of high projections, and then we can hone in on that kindergarten a little bit better and a little bit closer.
Okay, thank you.
Is, two questions. ADM is going to be affected by all-day kindergarten, I would guess?
Yes. Well, yes, because it'll be 1.0.
And do we anticipate any change in kindergarten enrollment based on all-day K?
So we, do you have it? With your survey data?
I think the survey data, I would defer to Gwen on the survey data, or Susan?
Well, the survey data, data asked if people were interested in a half-day versus a full day. It didn't give us an indication if there were families who were planning to go to another school outside of Edina Public Schools if they were going to instead come here. So I cannot answer that question with the data that, with the survey that we sent out.
I think one response would be right now, our full-day kindergarten classes are staffed to 24, and they have a pair that is funded through Edina Community Ed. That is the vehicle for us offering all-day kindergarten is, the fee is paid through Community Ed. Half-day are between 17, ideally between 17 and 21. So if we go to, you know, what you're going to have to look at is class size, the class size of kindergarten versus the class size of first grade. If we had five sections, let's use Normandale, let's use Concord as a better example. If we had five sections of 24 at Concord in kindergarten, which is what we have now, they would go into first grade above our class size guidelines, which is between 22 and 25. So we would be starting first grade a little bit higher than what the recommended class size average is. So yeah, I think in answer to your question, could all-day kindergarten affect somewhat kindergarten enrollment? Yes, I think it could.
Thanks, that's helpful.
So Margot, we had a demographic study a few years ago. Do we compare that study with actuals and then try to figure out where it went right or wrong and use that in the next study?
Well, certainly, yes. I do an analysis and look at, reference that data often. And what I can tell you is, at the last study, in the first year of history, was that blip in residential increase in enrollment, which we believe is due to the stimulus dollars for first-time home buyers and influx of people of buying entry-level homes into Edina. And so it was, even within a year, particularly even the kindergarten enrollments were different than what the demographic projections had shown. Certainly, the demographer, the demographer has been with the district for a number of years and also with the city, so she's very familiar with Edina School District and the city of Edina, and looked back at history. She has all our history, we only have to update a few years of history, and we'll certainly use that. But just know going forward, I look very, very closely at that data and compare where we were at and what the projections are. So a year from now, I'll be looking at that, and we can certainly provide that updated information too at that time.
We're also exploring with the city, type of a joint venture on this demographic study because we think the closer we can get to the city planning information, the more helpful it's going to be to our demographic study. So we're optimistic that we can create some kind of partnership with the city to have a joint demographic study that would take a look at both the city demographics and the school districts. But it probably gives a better view because the city may be able to give our demographer a little bit more information than we were able to provide.
It's timely to have this report because it's October 1 and it's important key date in terms of school enrollment, yet it really is just now wait and see for the demographic study because I think there's going to be very important information for us to use in that.
I had a question in regard to the increase of the 200 students over the next five years. And Kathy, based on also, you know, looking at our buildings, do we have room for 200 more students at current building capacities, or do we need to be looking ahead to needing, needing more additional space?
I think some of that, I had examples of the secondary schools which showed we're okay in terms of capacity under existing programming. So I think a key to that, answering that is what is going on in our programming studies? What will the Facility Advisory Task Force tell us? And also what does the demographic study tell us? Because if it tells us all of a sudden because of new development within the city that three years from now, we're going to have potentially X more students, and they'll be spread across grade levels, but what is that going to do to capacity? So we will have certainly more work to do as, and I really see it as multiple pieces of information that could, could impact enrollment and facilities and needing to take a look at that, the capacities, not only at the secondary schools but the elementary schools.
And the Met Council just recently came out with projections as well, so we'll have quite a bit of data on a macro level back to the local level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're into our leadership update.
I'll, if he can vouch that one in for me. And I just want to give the board a quick update on some of the things going on as we continue to move with our strategic plan. We're into year two of our strategic plan around next generation Edina Public Schools. Again, it's a strong mission, value-based, vision-focused. The district is in the midst of, and really what we feel of value going forward is to have strong position statements that will help drive some of our strategic work around what does a personalized learning experience mean, so we're all in the same language around that. Again, clarification around equity, both from a race and socioeconomic, as we work for our all-for-all, and then finally, this commitment to collaboration and the strong work of partnership. The board has also reviewed a district partnership policy as we continue to explore relationships on how we can maximize our reach as it is, both with internal partners as well as external beyond the school boundaries. We do have our three big goals around personalized learning, around this alignment piece of educational programs and partnerships. Our major initiatives, we're continuing to make progress on the secondary study. That team is in the process of doing a lot of data gathering and beginning to start narrowing our focus. We're also collecting data from the University of Minnesota who's done some research work for us, both on grade level configuration as well as daily schedules at the secondary level, again, providing us more timely information. The Facility Task Force will soon be meeting as they continue to gather information and create some standards of what we expect in, as we look to our future facility needs. We also have a survey that's out in the community right now, again, getting data around both our study areas of secondary study and our early childhood through grade five as well as our facility piece. Our all-for-all initiative as that committee has taken hold and is working on looking at both the data as relates to academics as well as access and opportunity. We're moving forward with our e-learning square and soon be gathering data on the success of that. Again, that partnership is going well with Best Buy, and it's been an area that we've grown, and again, we'll make an assessment later this year as to what our next steps might be around that. I also think the birth-through-grade-five study, we could have some influence on what we're looking at for technology in our elementary world. The budget and staffing process, we are planning to move that up and so that we are looking at trying to have this finished a little bit earlier since because our summer month is going to be very busy. We also know what the revenues are going to look like for 2014-15, so as Margot rolls that forward in November and December, we'll be looking at, while the board will still approve the budget in June, that we'll be actually taking some action around some of our staffing and some of our budget allocations as early as late April, early May, and we'll continue to work through that. Again, as we talk about all these studies, it's still about the excellence of Edina, and then how do we advance that excellence? So it's that two-pronged approach, we're going to still stay strong in what we know is important according to our mission, what are some of those finer tuning things we can do to advance that. On the screen now, I have a list of a variety of initiatives and pilots that we're moving forward on. This is just a small list of touches on what's going on right now in the schools so that people need to understand that our staff is working very hard on a variety of initiatives while we're studying the next generation. We are on, on the move already as far as everything from our writer's block, which is a student-driven writing center, the going online, so students are communicating now online in real time, to collaborative Wednesdays where students now during the school day at the high school have time to meet with their teachers right during the school day to get support. We talked about the e-learning squares, Southview and Valley View both have unique pilots going on around understanding students' learning styles. The board learned more about that at their visit to. The board learned more about that at their visit to Southview last week. Valley View has a ramp-up to readiness. It's a college readiness program for the University of Minnesota. Again, just around this whole personal profile work. We've got a variety of media, or elementary intervention, or pilot projects going around, around math interventions and media specialists, behavior specialists. And then our whole push with the school, strong as a staff, working hard on professional learning communities. On October 30th will be our first late start where we'll be asking students to sleep in a little bit and families to make necessary arrangements. We are working closely with community education to try to ease that burden for families. But this will be an important time for our staff to get together and really talk about students, talk about this alignment of curriculum. And so teachers will be getting together to talk and really help them advance their work going forward. As we look to 2014, the administration's now starting to shape some key plans with our strategic plan. I just want to highlight a few of the decisions that'll be rolling out in 2014. One is the strategic position statements. Those, that'll be our first big step that we take forward and the board will likely be seeing that in November and December. The second major action will be where we take a look at our, what are our power standards around our state standards? What are the key standards that must be in place at every grade level and every curriculum area? What are those common assessments? Do we measure that and make sure students are mastering those standards? Then finally, how are we going to provide grading around that? And this is, again, an area that we do not have strong alignment and that we really do need to make sure we have a comprehensive way of approaching this. And this will be a big area of discussion at our sites, as well as coming to the board through policy and some alignment around that. Another major area then will be in the secondary study, the grade-five-through-12 study. Is taking a look at what the schedule should be. We need some alignment again between our middle school and our high school schedules, especially to make sure those ninth graders have those options, as well as the space recommendations. And this will relate back to grade-level configuration. And again, we have a team that's studying those options out there, working with our architects around this. But we'll be seeking input from staff and the community as that goes forward. But those recommendations will be coming to the board this spring. The board will also be accepting the birth-through-grade-five study recommendations, as well as the facilities project recommendations. And all this will be rolled out again, spring, early summer. And finally, we're really looking at trying to expand our volunteer efforts because we know for all of this to work, that we're going to continue to need a strong partnership from our community. We're starting to grow our relationship a little stronger with the city of Edina, with Fairview, Southdale Hospital, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, around how we can maximize the resources, that spirit of volunteerism continues to grow throughout our community. But these are some key initiatives that, part of our strategic plan that we'll be acting on very heavily this spring of 2014. Also want to talk a little bit about the curriculum review process and I'll ask Randy Smazl to step in here. This relates back to policy 603 and we're constantly updating our curriculum. There's a pretty busy slide here that does highlight that. But I think if Randy can kind of talk us through that slide a little bit to explain how the district goes through a regular review process, I think that'd be helpful for the board and the community.
Good evening, all. Every six years or so, we do curricular reviews for content areas. And so we, we have this cycle that we march through. And during that time, we look at new materials that align to the standards for those different content areas and we purchase materials. So these Xs on this grid represent years in which we have capital expenditures in those areas for materials. And then following those years with Xs are continued work around implementation, refinement of assessment, et cetera. So it actually goes beyond one year, but the Xs really represent the major expenses to the school district. So for 2013-14, there are six major areas that we're looking at. Some elementary language arts purchases, some elementary French language arts purchases for materials. We're also looking at our elementary social studies. And then the, the bottom three around secondary health, so a review around secondary health, around family and consumer sciences, and then also looking at our world languages. The world languages piece ties very nicely to one of the recommendations in our secondary study around language. And so we'll have a lot of conversation with the world language teachers yet this year about that particular recommendation and this idea of students achieving a second language by the time they graduate from high school. So as you can see, then those cycles are replicated about six years out. So each of the areas are up for review about every six years. One of the interesting pieces that we are working on is we're also looking at, how do we collaborate across this, across the metro area and across the state? Because all of the districts really work independently to adopt materials and they all have budgets. And, and so millions and millions of dollars are spent across the state of Minnesota alone looking at materials and courses. And through our Hopkins partnership, we are proposing some ways in which we can kind of partner on materials adoptions. And so we'll take a look at that down the road. But one of the interesting things that has developed is this Minnesota Partnership for Collaborative Curriculum. And there's about 40 digital courses being proposed for 2015 for grades three through 12 for course content areas. This is all being facilitated by District 287. And our cost is about $8,300. It's actually a dollar per ADM. And right now, there are over 30 Minnesota school districts that have adopted a common framework through which we'll develop digital curriculum over the next few years. And there's a link there that has an overview to the, the project itself and you can explore more some of the details of what it looks like, et cetera. But I think it's an exciting partnership because this is, a dollar per student for 40 digital courses by 2015 would be a significant savings to our school district and to many school districts. So through this partnership, we hope to work together to be able to develop digital curriculum that help us continue to grow and move forward into, into more of a digital base as a school system. There'll always be a place for paper, of course, and there'll always be a place for certain books and textbooks. But there are efficiencies to be gained by working together and by looking at digital resources because they can do things that oftentimes print materials cannot do.
Thank you, Randy.
Randy, could you just, for the, for the audience and for us, just what is the typical outcome when you review a certain subject every six years?
So typically, what we do is we look at belief statements, philosophy statements within a department. We look at big ideas within a department. You know, we could take world languages and say, what do we want our students in world language to achieve by the end of the program? So we try to establish those big overriding ideas for a department. And then we look at specifically what, what standards are being addressed in different grade levels or different courses. And so we make sure we have standards alignment throughout all of our curriculum in K-12 or through 612, whenever that department, whatever grade levels that department touches. And so we look at the scope and sequence of standards across the curriculum. And then we go out and we start reviewing materials that are available on the market that relate to those standards. And we're looking for materials that help, that are aligned to the standards and help our instructors and our students best learn those. So we're looking for relevant, engaging materials where students see themselves in those materials. And so we have a list of criteria that we use to evaluate those materials. We try to narrow that down and come to a couple of options. We, of course, look at the cost of the materials as one of the criteria. And then in the end, we hope to have new materials that help us better teach the standards in a more engaging way than in the past. And then we work on developing assessments to assess how well the students are learning those standards based on those new materials. And then continue to do professional learning with the staff, with the teachers that are using those materials so they are prepared to use them in the classroom. And then, then there is some refinement work that's done in between that six-year cycle. But that's a pretty quick summary of some of the major steps in the process.
Thanks.
So Randy, according to this chart, we review anywhere from zero to seven different areas. Would it make any sense to spread that out a little bit more evenly?
Yeah, I think that's a great question and we are working on that. And where we want to be is we want to be able to have a three-year plan and be able to predict. Okay, we need about this much capital this year, this much the next year, and this much the third year. So we want to get a little bit better at forecasting out and then maybe evenly distributing some of those review areas. So that's some work yet that we have to do.
Later tonight, the board's going to be acting on a teacher evaluation plan. We did, we're walking into modifications that we'll explain more at the time of the meeting. But I again want Randy just to make the board aware of the evaluation plan. The board did hear a presentation at the September board meeting and then also reviewed the memorandum of understanding at the October 7th meeting. And this kind of highlights kind of the framework. It's based on state statute. Some of the what's new that was discussed at our September meeting. Randy, if you just want to touch on any of those points real briefly, then we'll.
So we moved from this four-year cycle, which we currently have, to all staff being reviewed through a summative evaluation process every three years. We moved from this role of alt-comp and coaches and administrators doing evaluations to kind of this blending of having peer evaluators and administrators in the process, but primarily peer evaluators being trained in the evaluation process. We have to include a portfolio option, which is new in the law. We haven't had that requirement in the past. So there's this option that teachers can go through and create the portfolio as evidence of their, of their skill set. And then 35% of the evaluation has to be based on local assessment results. So that's part of the performance piece in the law. And so the way we will achieve that is we will be tracking staff's achievement of their SLGs, which are student learning goals, over three years. And then that composite score will equate to that 35% of their total evaluation. So it's really based on at what level they hit their student learning goals. New in the law is collecting longitudinal student engagement data. So there's work to be done around building some infrastructure that helps us do that. There's lots of interesting data coming out on how you measure student engagement. And then developing a three-year plan to demonstrate meeting of expectation. So rather than having that, all of that observation, summative work done in a year, it's really spreading that set of evidence out over three years. So giving staff the best possible opportunity to display their talents. And then we move from a two-level assistance plan, really, to a three-level assistance plan. So again, approaching this from a growth mindset. We have a growth mindset for kids. We have a growth mindset for staff. And so wanting to make sure that we're meeting the needs of staff in this growth process. So those are some of the major changes in what we'll see in the teacher evaluation system.
We'll talk further about that at the action item, the action item later in the meeting. Also, the all-day kindergarten proposal. Maybe ask Gwen to just highlight this, as well as Val. Susan Burke also, Susan Burke, Susan Brad also worked on that proposal. And the board did talk a little bit about this at our work session on October 7th.
So we're quite fortunate that the legislature has agreed to fund all-day kindergarten for districts across the state. And with that comes a lot of change because it seems like forever we have offered a half-day kindergarten program since Edina's existence. And we decided that we needed to survey families to see what they thought about this. So we sent a survey out to our prospective four-year-old, families with four-year-olds and five-year-olds who are possibly coming to join our kindergarten program next year. We had, we sent out over 400 surveys and we got a 50-plus percent return rate. And of the families who responded to our survey, over 91% fully supported all-day kindergarten. And with that, we didn't feel that we could move forward with the recommendation to continue supporting a half-day kindergarten program, even though we do realize that's a very important time for families to be able to connect with their children for half of the day and then be in school half of the, half of the day. We didn't feel that we could move forward with that, with that proposal. So the other thing that we also looked at is that we looked at the amount that we're spending on transportation during the middle of the day, either taking morning kindergartners home or bringing afternoon kindergartners to school, which is about $160,000, $150,000 to $160,000 possible savings. This also is part of the strategic plan and the all-for-all initiative. So it, when the legislature agreed to this funding, it really lines up with what we are moving forward to do in the district. And we are short two classrooms, two kindergarten classrooms throughout the district if we are able to move forward. And that is a part of the, of the levy. If there are any questions? Colleagues?
Questions?
I understand that with the results from the survey that the half-day program is going to, in all likelihood, go away. How strongly did those families feel about that issue? I mean, are we going to alienate some families in the process of making this change? And I guess my question would be, how do we communicate with them? How do we make them, help them to understand that this is the way society is moving and that they need to come along?
I think that's a great question. Question for Susan.
As far as the, the data from the survey is concerned, I'm actually just an update from what Dr. Jackson said, that we actually, our latest results were about 63% return rate. So of, of those who indicated that they wanted the half-day option, about 20 to 25% said, only if it's at my neighborhood school, then I'll go to the full-day option. And then there were a few who said, you know, I only want the half-day option. I might choose something else. So it's hard to tell from a, you know, quick one-question survey exactly where they'll be. But I think the bigger part of your question really relates to that transition that all kindergarten students would have when they come to the school. See, we even have that now with our half-day program, that some kids are, have a little bit of a transition time. And, and in talking with some of the principals in particular, and old principal Sandstad said, you know, we do that all the time on a case-by-case basis. We work with them, with the family to say, what's the transition that we can do to help your child enter into kindergarten? Because it is a huge adjustment, no matter if it's a half-day or a full-day program for some of those kids.
Again, this will be discussed further at the action item, or the discussion part of the board meeting.
Additional questions?
So the savings from the busing goes general fund?
Yes, that would be part of the general fund. We're doing an overall calculation in terms of bringing the all-day, everyday kindergarten program in from the community service fund. And the additional funding, although the state is increasing the funding, the additional funding is 0.388 versus a half. So all in all, we think with the transportation savings and bringing it into the general fund, that will, our hope is to have it as obviously a break-even. Certainly with the midday transportation, though, even with currently at 160-some thousand, if we have less, you know, if we continued some sort of half-day program, at some point, it just really is not cost-effective from that standpoint to be just picking up ones and twosies in the bus. So not that, but that was not the main motivator for the recommendation.
And we're finding the similar position that our neighboring districts are taking as well around this.
I just wonder, at times, we've talked about whether we could have before-school programs that we don't have busing for, where kids might be able to come in early for programming, whether we can take some of that savings and figure out a way to get some of the kids to school early if that is an opportunity for them, that's all.
Additional questions? Thank you all. Moving on to our consent agenda. Get a motion, please. Can a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our consent agenda. Rick, could you please walk us through?
Again, we have our personnel recommendations, both from our K-12 system as well, as well as our community education services. We have the appointments that we do annually for various district committees, councils, and teams that involve community members, ask the board to act on that. We also have a revised in our partnership with the Hopkins School District. Our board did approve an agreement in May, and then after getting into more discussion around what it meant, we decided to move to guiding principles. Again, we're seeing some success and some benefit from this relationship already, but the Hopkins Board has approved it, so we'd ask the board to approve that revised one. We do have a few gift items, as our community continues to support us in so many ways. And that would conclude the consent agenda.
Would it be appropriate for me to ask one question about an item on that agenda?
Just philosophically speaking, as I was looking through the district committees, councils, and teams, I noticed there were some committees where we did not have student representatives on them, but it seemed like the kind of committee where student membership or member or two might make sense. And so, do we have a procedure or a way to look at that on, you know, overall, to determine whether it would make sense to add student members to some of our committees?
We could take that back to the policy committee. Makes sense?
Thank you.
Could I ask, I don't know if this is the right time for another question on the same topic?
Please do.
Of the partnerships. A comment and a question. One, just a note for the community, that this is a great opportunity where the district really welcomes and invites parent and community representatives to participate with the advisory positions. Kathy, I think you've done a count before, I did a count this time. We have 84 positions, some of which are not filled. So, it's an opportunity to engage more people who may be interested. My question is whether our, as we move forward with secondary study implementation and begin our birth-to-grade-five studies, if we have an opportunity to take a look at some of the alignment of our committees and the needs of the district moving forward. I'm not implying that we might have space in that workload to accommodate it, but we might have an opportunity.
So, at the leadership level, we're just really saying, how do we get input? I mean, that's part of the communication plan, is, is the committee structure really still the way, the best way to get input?
Right.
How do we use WebEx? How do we use other tools? You know, there's still that value in face-to-face, but it's finding the time, you know, and there's huge commitment on the community's part.
Yes.
So, we're looking at other school models, what other schools are doing, but so, and it does seem timely as we move into this next generation, that we also look at next generation of valued input. So, I think there is going to be some of that occurring. Some of those committees probably are time for restructuring. And so, some are required by law. But again, I think we continue to value that input and that voice, so I think we'll have to keep evolving, having it evolve.
Right. Thanks.
Maybe a suggestion is sometime in the next 12 months, we sort of have a workshop where we review those and talk a little bit about where we might be heading. Historically, we've approved these, even if there may be some additions to students and others in the future.
Right. And my broader question is just, is alignment with the current vision of the district, whether some of the roles of individual committees are potentially duplicated, and recognizing that some are required, that we have them, but.
Yeah. And there's just, there's an awful lot of new tools out there that we can access to help us.
Great. We have the consent agenda on the table. Any other additional discussion? All those in favor in approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the acceptance of the financial statements for the fiscal year-end, June 30th, 2013. And a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We did have a presentation this evening. Any discussion or questions?
Nice job.
Well, and I'd like to say, nice job by our staff all year long, which makes the audit report work.
All those in favor of approving the financial statements as presented, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is our employee health insurance renewal. Can a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the health insurance renewal. Little background, please.
Good evening again. Both Gwen and I co-lead the insurance committee, and we, at this point in time, we were required to go out to bid for health insurance. And we are also informed the teachers' union is having a vote whether or not they will remain in peeps since they've been in it for two years, the state insurance program. So, the district did conduct the bid that we needed to have for medical and health insurance, and then requested alternate bids, just in case, depending how the vote goes the end of this week, that we have an option if the teachers' group does come back in. So, the recommendation is Blue Cross Blue Shield. If the district pool is the same, and if the EME votes to rejoin the district group, then the recommendation would be preferred one. And we had a variety of vendors bid. Some chose not to bid on either of the options, and the information's provided in your report. And we would have a rate and then a rate cap for 2015.
I sit on this committee, and I mean, it would be a huge benefit to the employee group if we, if they did come back together. Their rates would go down, the cap was better, but we will wait to see where that falls out.
Yeah. It was a competitive process, both way, you know, with both options, so.
Additional discussion?
One other item, no change in the benefit whatsoever in the plans offered.
Sign on, all those in favor of approving the employee health insurance renewal as presented, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, our teacher evaluation system. Can a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And this motion is the modified version that was amended into tonight's agenda. Little, we had a presentation. Any additional background you'd like to share?
Sure. A 10-member committee consisting of five administrative representatives and five EME representatives have been working for the past year to put together a memorandum of understanding that describes what teacher evaluation will look in Edina moving forward, and that that teacher evaluation system will meet the statute as established in 2011 by our Minnesota Legislature. And tonight, we are presenting basically where we're at in that process and asking for adoption by the board of the teacher evaluation memorandum of understanding, with a process in place to address some of the modifications, which we'll present here in just a moment. Just as a note, our EME members have voted and approved of the teacher evaluation MOU. However, in some recent meetings with our school board in a work session on the 7th, and feedback from some administration, and at our October 16th Teaching and Learning Board Committee, feel that there are still some clarifications needed in specific language components, and still some remaining concerns. What we're offering is a process by which we would take those concerns back to the teacher evaluation committee and continue to process those, and then bring those back to the board as an informational update. So, some of those concerns are listed or summarized in those, the concerns aren't, but the sections that we have concerns about are summarized in this resolution. So, the first one, Section 8 changes to rubrics. The concern was, would these be changes to the performance descriptors as well? And so, we need some clarifying language around that. The intent is not to change the performance descriptors, but to just allow some flexibility for when we do get into the training process, to be able to adjust the rubric language so it better ensures consistent interpretation and then leads to better evaluation by the teachers. So, that was for Section 8. For Section 12F around teacher rights, there's still some concern that a teacher requiring assistance plan will be referred to the co-chairs of the teacher evaluation committee, and the concern was that that may violate the teacher's privacy rights, because what, the question is, what if they don't want the teacher evaluation co-chairs to know about that particular issue? So, we have some, a little bit of work to do around that in terms of clarification. In Section 12KD around discipline, discipline, there's reference to discipline in the master agreement, so could the, the concern was, could we just make reference to the master agreement in that section instead of trying to describe a discipline termination process in there? In Section 17 around program facilitation, it was pointed out through some feedback that the use of facilitator and coordinator isn't always consistent, so we have a little language cleanup around that. In Section 17, also, there is reference to the committee selecting the program facilitator, but we want to hold true to the roles of the committee versus the roles of the school board. Committees recommend staff for higher school boards then complete that hiring process, so it's just a cleanup in our language again on that. And then, the last one, or the last two, I should say, 18C, questions around the language around grievance. The concern was the term grievance applies only to the master agreement, but now we have the word grievance in a teacher MOU, or MOU, rather. And the statement's too general, and maybe it makes reference to any valuation that could be grieved, so there's, and we do have an appeals process described in here, so some felt that was redundant. So, again, these are some pieces to work through potentially with the teacher evaluation committee. And then, the last piece of feedback in our work session was, in Section 19, it says terms of memorandum, revisions to the MOU, and incorporation of MOU into the master agreement, but the intent is for the MOU to stay separate from the master agreement, so that's just a tweaking of that language. So, we feel like one of the things that a president, Rob Gardner of EME, and myself realizes that through this process, there, there has continued to be tweaking along the way, and we feel like there still is some of that that's needed. We feel like most of this has landed. We do have support from the teachers in the process, so we are, we are here tonight to ask for action to continue to move it forward with the process in place, to do some language cleanup, and then bring back to the board for information update.
So, the areas that are left to be cleaned up will be first attempted through the teacher evaluation committee?
Correct. So, our process would be, we'd take it back to that committee, say, here are the concerns that we heard through our work session, through our teaching and learning committee from our administration. And our timeline has been tight, but that's, I mean, that's the timeline we set, and we wanted to keep things moving, but that we would go back to that committee, do the language cleanup, and then bring that back.
Additional discussion?
Randy, just to, just to clarify for our audience, do you see the outcomes of teacher evaluation system different than the outcomes of alt comp, or do you see them being similar?
They're similar in that now they're combined. So, the process in the, in the past where teachers set student learning goals, and there was this performance pay associated with that. Now that the meeting of student learning goals over multiple years factors in as 35% of their performance and their evaluation, so it's, it's really a merger of alt comp and our evaluation program that existed previously.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the teacher evaluation system as amended, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Item D, our scheduled review of policies. Can a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Through review of District Policy 105, discussion?
With, since we've last seen this, there are no changes, actually, to 105, 425, and 429, since we've last looked at this as a board. We did take comments back to the policy committee in reference to 105, to review the mission language and the purpose of the appendix. We agreed in committee that the language that is currently present is probably the best way to move forward.
Additional questions? Comments? Kathy's still looking.
No, I'm, I'm good. I'm just making a note.
Additional discussion? We have seen these all before. All those in favor of approving Policy 105, 425, and 429, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. Discussion items? All-day K?
It's discussed previously. If there's further discussion that needs to occur, board to be open to it. We'll also be getting this information out to the public, so that there's time for, again, feedback prior to the board taking action in November. But the timeliness and challenge that all districts are facing in Minnesota right now is the kindergarten registration is also just around the corner, so, but we'd open it up for board question at this point.
Susan, you said the response rate went from 50 to 63. Did the percentage of in-favor change?
No, it changed by about a .02 percent.
Questions? Comments? Thoughts?
So, we will formally vote on this in, at the November meeting?
That's correct.
I just wanted to share some comments. I'm still concerned that we're proposing a one-size-fits-all for kindergarten. I've continued to talk to constituents and try to get feedback on this issue. I know that we have a survey out there, but we're looking at, you know, only next year's kindergarten class, and there's kids, there's parents, obviously, with kids that are younger and who are still looking at these options. And I, I get the benefits of all-day K for, you know, certain students, especially that really need that, but not, I, I think in our community, not all kids need that, not all parents want that. And what we're going to say, as Lonnie mentioned earlier, is that, well, regardless, this is what we're proposing, and this is what we're going to do, so it's all, all-day or nothing. And I do think that could cause concern for some parents who are not interested in an all-day program. A lot, a lot of, there are parents who choose to, to the half-day program because they enrich their children's lives plenty that other half-day. So, I am concerned that, I believe, I'm concerned that this is going to just make some constituents unhappy. Also, I, I guess I would wonder if we've done any internal studies of our own, looking at outcomes of half-day K students versus all-day K students? And did we see a huge difference in terms of the outcomes for those students? And, you know, I continue to get feedback from parents that say, you know, these are things we still want, and they wish that we would provide some kind of an option.
Well, to respond to your first concern, we too had a huge discussion about that. Just because we would be, hopefully, be offering all-day kindergarten to all of our students, that doesn't mean that everyone is ready. And so, even now, our, some of our principals are working with families who sign their children up for, for a full-day program, and yet, there are challenges for a child being in a full-day program. Some were not ready. And so, they're working, so they're working through some of these challenges now. There are some children who are in the half-day program, and they're not necessarily ready for a half-day program either. I'm saying that all to say that our principals are ready and are currently working on, with families on an individual case, and they would continue to do that next year if the board agreed with the recommendation to move forward with a full-day kindergarten program. board agreed with the recommendation to move forward with a full-day kindergarten program. And so if there are other challenges with families, we will work through them, just as we're working through them now. To respond to your second question about the research regarding the benefits for an all-day versus a half-day program, there have been several studies across the country, and several studies across the state of Minnesota specifically, and, excuse me, the research does show that children who are in a full-day kindergarten program do benefit more than in a half-day program. It's very different, and they have more time to work on their reading and math skills in particular. There are also some longitudinal studies that are being conducted right now as well across the state.
And I think we discussed it in our workshop earlier this month, but maybe didn't say this explicitly tonight, that given the fewer number of children who'd want a half-day experience, we would not be able to, given our current space, to deliver that at every site, and so it would be a matter of maybe offering it at one site, and so people who would choose that wouldn't necessarily be at their neighborhood school, and would be at a central site. Is that correct?
If we were to offer one half-day program, it would be at one particular site. We were even challenged to look at which particular site that might be, because when we looked at the survey data, we asked families to identify the school that they would be attending, and it really was across the board. There were two, maybe two students at one school, three students at another school, and so there wasn't, there wasn't a large enough population at any particular school to offer it.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Moving on to 400 Series Policy Personnel.
So just starting with some background on 419, this is a policy that the board adopted after review at our July 15th meeting, so the only suggested change is the addition in 3A of e-cigarettes in terms of identifying tobacco-related products. In 430, some of the language here, well, most of our policy discussion referencing this particular policy on student-teacher internship supervision was around background checks, and this is specifically referenced in 6B. So the committee asked whether or not it's required to have background checks, and it was clarified that it is not required for clinical observations. That was some of our discussion on 430.
So is there anything else somebody would like us to take back?
I have, on all of these, I have some, you know, language here is maybe a little confusing, some suggestions, and rather than bore you with it all now, I can just send those to you all, and you can look at them at your next meeting.
That would be great, because we'll go through them again. So thank you. Yeah, and anything like that, if any other member has those kinds of suggestions, just send them through by email. We will incorporate it into the discussion, so.
I just didn't want you to think that I wasn't reading them word for word.
I would not doubt that. No, I know you have, and we count on that. So then I'll just move on with some of our discussion on 432. Here, in, in general, we just looked at some simplified, simplified paragraph 2B, and placed an emphasis on student needs. So that was some of the driving discussion behind the changes that you see here. In 434, regarding substitute teachers, we did, here, a lot of our discussion was based on clarification of language with the terms of substitute teacher, casual substitute, and long-term substitute. So throughout the policy, the goal is to clarify the use of those terms, and when they are used. We did delete some small sections of this policy as noted. We had some duplication between paragraphs 4G and 5A, so we're suggesting that those be simplified and combined. Other than the notes that you see on 437 as written, I don't have any other discussion to add from our policy meeting unless there are some substantial notes that anyone would like us to take back. So then I'll move on to 910. Again, similar to the review of Policy 419, we simply added the reference to e-cigarettes in 3B. We just move on to the 800? Moving on to 800. Need another chart. 801. Yeah, I don't have any substantial notes. Lenny and Lonnie, you may have some notes from 801 and 802, other than the language as amended that you can see. My next notes are really 804.
I don't have anything to add to that.
801 and 802. So 804, some of our discussion in this section, oh, 804, the same, I guess, other than what's here, taking a look at the language that's here, what we appreciated is some review that Eric Hamilton, our new director of Buildings and Grounds, has been able to provide for some of these series of policy, including 804, and then moving into 805, the same. 807. This was my personal favorite discussion in terms of our last policy meeting, but just taking a look at our policy in reference to inclement weather, what we really mean is we're addressing hazardous weather. There may be a lot of weather in the state of Minnesota that different people may consider to be inclement, but that might not warrant an adjustment of our regular schedule. So a focus on hazardous weather. Moving on throughout the policy, we looked at it with a lens of clarifying the language addressing closing and late start. Some of our language in the policy was really geared toward closing only, and the reality is that sometimes we have a late start. So we wanted to clarify some of that. Likewise, clarification in the appendix of 1.4, clarification about how announcements will be made to the media. And then later, in Appendix 1, number 7, we suggested striking language that would indicate that an event may continue if the venue is paid for by the team, and our discussion is that that's really irrelevant. If there's a safety condition, that's the driving force behind whether or not a facility would be closed. Policy 808, naming facilities, mostly just some minor rewording throughout that as written. We had a little bit more extensive discussion in Policy 809. Here, we looked at it through a lens of consistency with our mission. When and why would a particular part of a facility be named? And then also some further discussion regarding the terms that are used in this policy, naming rights in consideration, and naming rights in recognition. Just making sure that we're clear on how the terms would be used, and it's something that we'll be discussing again at our next meeting. So if anyone has thoughts on the use of that language, to share them with us, that would be helpful.
On that one, did it, did it really come down to what was negotiated in the actual contract that you would have with said naming party?
It's not always a contract. I mean, sometimes, yes.
I mean, the agreement.
Yes.
I mean, a lot of the language seemed to go back to whatever the agreement was.
Right. And then the policy is dictating the agreement. I mean, here's where it all needs to focus back to in terms of alignment with the mission and the vision for the district.
But the policy isn't limiting necessarily how the agreements.
Correct.
And the content of the agreements.
Correct.
Great. Thanks.
So 810, security, we had a discussion around best practice. There was a lot of input from staff in terms of how this particular policy is being used, with some additional notes regarding safety for students and use of sites. And then finally, the recommendation to rescind Policy 803. It seemed to be a standalone policy in reference to guidelines for turf management. We don't have any other kinds of policies for managing garden areas, or sidewalks, or things like that. So it seemed to be a policy that no longer had a direct purpose, to be speaking of language.
And we actually couldn't figure out what the original purpose might have been.
So our recommendation is to rescind. Lonnie, any other notes from our last meeting?
I think you've covered them.
That's a big chunk. Good work.
We covered a lot.
Yeah.
I think we have some catch-up to do though, to stay on track with what we want to get through this year, so, trying to regain some ground.
When's your next meeting?
We have said a next meeting.
It's November 1st.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll get that stuff to you this week.
Thank you.
It is.
Anything else on policies? Information? Announcements?
Just to ask the board if they could have you take a look at your calendars, we do need to approve the election results, either the 7th or 8th of November. It'd be a brief one-action item meeting, so maybe at the, prior to the board leaving tonight, we'll, we'll do that. We're also looking at a possibility of a Hopkins School Board, Edina School Board joint training session around equity, scheduled for the 19th. I don't know if people are available. It's, again, not a required event, but it's an opportunity.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Hopkins, and I'll get you more information, but if you are interested to be part of that dialogue.
What was the date?
The 19th.
19th.
It's on our calendar already, if you subscribe. She's already put it on. Thank you.
And remind community members of the upcoming board election on November 5th. Strong-crew candidates, and we appreciate all their work, and that is coming around the corner. That would complete, complete my report.
Thank you, Rick. Any other additional items?
I just want to point out there are a couple of recognition of staff at the end. I always think it's great that people write in, and I encourage more people, if you see staff members, you like what they're doing, write us and let us know. We'll put it in our notes.
And the staff get a follow-up the next day from us.
Yeah. I think it's great to see.
Anything we missed? Thank you all. Thanks for all the hard work on the policies and everything else going on. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.